Republic meetings were held by the Human Services Commission to discuss and prioritize safety net needs. And four public meetings were held by the Subcommittee on Homelessness to specifically identify needs with our unsheltered community. All comments have been accepted. Once HUD accepts the consolidated plan and the action plan activities to be funded for 2021, the city will sign an agreement with HUD and subsequently with the grantees. So today, the Human Services Commission and staff is requesting adoption of the five-year consolidated plan and the first-year action plan for 202021. In addition, we wish to get authorization for our city manager to negotiate and execute related documents, agreements, and modifications. This concludes staff's overview, and I'm available for questions.
There we go. Thank you, Ms. Young. With that, any questions for Ms. Young regarding the item? I see no questions. With that, I'm going to open up the public hearing for 5.02, the Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan. Is there any public comment, Madam City Clerk?
We have not received any public comment, Mayor.
Okay, I see YouTube is back up and running, so that's good. With that, if there's no public comment, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Any questions or comment by the council? In that case, I'd be willing to entertain a motion. Moved by Councilmember Monroe. Looked by, seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. Any discussion on the motion? A roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner. Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Thank you. With that, moving on to 6.01 matters for consideration. This is the adoption of a resolution committing to the action items identified by the My Brothers Keeper Alliance Mayor's Pledge and recommended by the Obama Foundation to review the Livermore Police Department's use of force policies and all the city policies and practices for incidences of structural discrimination and implicit bias and discussion and direction regarding the community engagement process. So this is going to be an overview of those policies. But personally, what I'm really looking forward to tonight is a discussion about what the outreach is going to look like, the community engagement that all of us are committed to as we move ahead with this much larger community dialogue to engage the community to then find out where we best need to address these issues related to reform to make this a safe community for everyone. So with that, the staff report.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'll just do a brief introduction here. Tonight, we're going to hear briefly from our police chief, Chief Harris, and then from Captain Young with the bulk of our presentation this evening. Finally, I'll do a wrap-up. As you noted, we wanted to provide some information this evening. But the main purpose of the presentation this evening is to take input from the public and then direction from the council on the beginnings of the outline for the outreach process. Based on that direction from the council this evening, your staff will return with a framework for that outreach process for the council to take further comment on and then ultimately approve that outreach process. We will return to you at a subsequent meeting with the framework of that outreach process. And with that, I'd like to introduce Chief Michael Harris.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm Michael Harris, your Chief of Police. Like so many other Americans across our country, we at the Livermore Police Department were shocked and saddened after watching the video that recorded the death of Mr. George Floyd at the hands of a Minneapolis police officer on May 25th, 2020. We condemn the actions of the officer, and we want our community to know that they not only go against LPD's training, but in fact, they go against our values, our culture, and what we believe wearing the badge represents. At the Livermore Police Department, we are committed to service, justice, and fundamental fairness. Over six years ago, we established what we call the Six Pillars of the Livermore Police Department. We continue to use the Six Pillars to guide us as an organization. These pillars have helped us to build a solid foundation grounded in a shared purpose that is reflected in our people, plans, and practices. The six pillars defining the values and priorities of the organization are as follows. Pillar number one, public safety and crime prevention. We believe public safety is the core function of the organization achieved through relationships, enforcement, and education. Pillar number two is accountability and public trust. We believe in conducting ourselves honorably, being transparent, and understand that our effectiveness relies on community support. Pillar number three is community engagement. We believe in partnering with our community to enhance collaborative problem solving, to improve the quality of life in Livermore. Pillar four is quality service. We believe in treating people with respect and providing superior service, both internally and externally, that exceeds expectations regardless of circumstances. Pillar number five is innovation and best practices. We believe in continually evaluating and developing our operations and services to be leaders in the law enforcement profession. And pillar number six is employee development, wellness, and succession planning. We believe in promoting safety and wellness, as well as providing staff with development opportunities and clear direction to enhance their skill and prepare them to be future leaders in our organization. Following the tragic and senseless death of George Floyd, both elected officials and some community members expressed the desire to examine the Livermore Police Department's use of force policy and other city and police department policies for practices for incidences of discrimination or implicit bias. Consistent with the city's commitment to transparency, we began sharing information with the community on our social media sites and our police department webpage about eight specific policies that were in question. At council's direction tonight, staff is reporting back on these eight policies. In addition, council desired to consider the adoption of a resolution committing to the Mayor's Pledge and to discuss a community engagement process for examination of the Livermore Police Department's use of force policies. We welcome the opportunity to listen, learn, and engage with our community on this most important topic. Continual improvement is consistent with our mission statement of service with honor and protection with purpose and our vision statement of committed to organizational excellence and community safety. And it's also consistent with the Six Pillars of the Livermore Police Department. I would like to introduce and turn this over to Captain Jeremy Young, who will be leading this effort for the police department and who will be providing you with some additional information this evening. Captain Young?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, and Community. The Mayor's Pledge, prepared by the My Brothers Keeper Alliance, calls for a resolution committing to the following action items. Review use of force policies. Engage your communities by including a diverse range of input, experiences, and stories in your review. Reporting the findings of your review to your community and seek feedback. Reform your community's policies or police use of force policies. Over the last several weeks, the city and law enforcement as a whole has received a number of questions regarding eight areas of police policy. In Livermore, chokeholds and strangleholds are not authorized. De-escalation is required. Officers are required to give a warning before shooting when feasible. Officers are required to use only that force that is reasonable and necessary. Officers have a duty to intercede. Shooting at moving vehicles is discouraged, and reporting is required whenever force is used. Attachment 12 goes into more detail in this area. Livermore Police Department takes the use of force very seriously and has a robust process in place to review any case where force is used. The process is documented in our use of force policy and is attached to this packet as attachment eight. It includes notification of a supervisor, a complete review of the scenario, documentation and review throughout several levels of the chain of command, and an annual analysis of all cases is completed to determine if there are any trends, training needs, equipment needs, and/or policy revision. Our 2019 use of force analysis revealed that officers use force in .07% of officer contacts and only 1.38% of all arrests. In the cases where force was used, none of the suspects were seriously injured. This information is provided in attachment 11. Because consistent with our commitment to transparency, we have posted all our policies on our webpage and have made specific social media posts to share information with our community in topics including LPD officer training, accountability, duty to intercede, community engagement, and use of force, early intervention, and recruiting and background process. These are provided as attachments 12 through 19. Training is an important aspect of Livermore police officers. New Livermore police officers go through a police academy that consists of 1,046 hours, and upon graduation, they enter a field training program that consists of at least 880 hours. They must complete both components successfully before working as a police officer on their own. Officers continue to receive training throughout their career. Some of the training topics include professionalism and ethics, cultural diversity, crisis intervention, de-escalation, use of force, anti-discrimination, and all of Livermore Police Department policies. While many of the recent community concerns were ignited by an unlawful use of force in Minneapolis, an important aspect of the concern is how race is related to the police response and outcome. For this reason, the process to address concerns require a thoughtfully designed program for community engagement and input. We have presented some information as a starting point and are ready and eager to listen, learn, and engage our community in this very important topic. At this point, I would like to have the city manager provide further information, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Jeremy. So this evening, our hope as your staff is to receive direction from the council on the goals for our overall outreach process. The stakeholders that in particular the council wants to make sure are included or have special outreach to certain groups. The timeline, the council is looking for initial feedback and information back and any specific suggestions for the overall process. Obviously, there is a variety of methods and depth for the outreach process that can be created. The council wishes to have certain portions of it return more quickly. That would be useful information for your staff to have. Obviously, there is a portion of the process that involves information gathering and listening, information distribution to the community, allowing the community a chance to discuss and provide feedback on those items. The items before you, of course, relate mainly to the police department, but if there are other areas of our operation or other areas that you'd like information on essentially how the city is doing, that can be made part of the overall information that is provided both to those who participate in the process and then ultimately to the council when this item returns. And with that, your staff is available for any questions.
Are there any questions for staff at this point? Councilmember Monroe.
All right. I had, I saw a clarification. I've had a couple of people ask me about why there's still a discrepancy between Eight Can't Wait, that they, what their website lists and what we, what our website lists, and if you could just clarify what that, where that stands, that would be great.
Very good. Councilmember Monroe, I will have Chief Harris answer that particular question.
Yes, thank you. So we are aware of that organization and aware of their measurement of us. I think that we very much do address all of the eight issues that they're concerned with in all of those areas, as Captain Young went over those with you. And the issue, I think, is there are some subtle terminology differences in the language. And so as we go through this process, we will certainly be open to further discussion on those issues and any needed changes to any of the policies. But I think we are, I would say, in substantial compliance with that. But more importantly, perhaps, we are absolutely in compliance with all the legal standards and Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training in California.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carling?
Just following up, I thought I heard at the rally a couple of weeks ago, Chief, that somebody suggested that the website wasn't up to date regarding those particular items. Is that, was that true, and is the website now up to date?
Yeah, I heard that too, and I'm not sure which website. If they're talking about our website, or if they're talking about Eight Can't Wait's website. To be honest, I'm not, I don't know much about Eight Can't Wait, the organization, or where it comes from, or how they've decided, you know, what they believe in. So we obviously can't can't control what they say or what they change.
So I, if I could just break in, so the Eight Can't Wait website, I looked at their database and the most recent complete year of data that they had was 2015. They had part of 2016, but the last complete year of data was 2015. And of course, we've revised our policy manual several times since then.
So.
But you're all confident that it's all up to date?
I'm, so let me speak to that actually, because I actually had an email exchange with Eight Can't Wait, because I was very puzzled. And at that point, I was told that the manual they'd used was 2016, and I sent them the corrected link to the 2021. I was under the impression they had actually used that, but it sounds like maybe not. Okay, well, I'm yeah, all confusing.
I only just want to make sure that we, the information that we're providing on the website is up to date, because that's my only concern.
The May 20, I checked it, and the May 5th, so as somebody who is not, you know, just went in randomly as any constituent could do, went in, found it, it's May 15th, 2020 is the one that's there right now.
Right. Councilmember Coomer?
Hi, I just, I wanted to confirm what I think I heard, and I think Chief Harris and Captain Young both mentioned it, that evaluating and updating policies and procedures is an ongoing process. When I was an Oakland police officer in 1976, I went through the academy, we went through an update of General Order K3, which is the use of deadly force with a firearm every several months. And we had to see that, we had to sit in class, we had to review that. I don't know how if we get to that level of training, we had several hundred officers in Oakland at that time. But I know the effort was always made by our chief to update and and provide new policy information when these items came up. Can you perhaps, Captain Young spoke to, I think, Captain Young, could you perhaps speak to the ongoing updating of policy and procedures and training for our entire department?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember, for the question. We do revise the policies as soon as the law changes. But we also review every policy once a year. For instance, the use of force policy, we last updated on June 5th when we took the carotid out based on state law and post-recommendation. So we do continually review those policies for any legal changes or case law decisions that affect our policies. And then when a policy's changed, the officers need to acknowledge the change in the policy electronically. And then we provide training as appropriate, depending on the type of policy and the type of change that required. And just quickly, we do also continual professional training for our officers every year to cover various topics.
Thank you so much.
Any further comments or questions from the council right now? They were just questions right now? Okay, with that, I'm going to open the public comment period. One of the things that we are really looking for from the public is how do we engage the community, of course, recognizing that this is a COVID-19 world? But we're, our role right now, obviously, you have the commitment of the council. We, most of us have attended the rallies, the demonstrations, and spoken in favor of this effort. All of us are outraged at the murder of George Floyd. And we want to be able to create this process that all of the council members have committed to as we move ahead with the engagement, which is required under the Mayor's Pledge. So how do we engage the community? What are the goals of that engagement? We are here to listen, and we're also here to then report back. And based on that community conversation, then we will develop the larger reform package around around the city of Livermore. So that's what we're looking for tonight, is specifically comments on how do we create this engagement process? How do we ensure that it's successful? And how best do we then move ahead? Those are at least my goals to, because I want to listen to the community tonight and find out what we can do to best listen to our community. So with that, I'm going to open the public comment period, and let's hear what everyone has to say.
City Clerk's office, please read the comments received from Zoom.
The first comment is from Tanya. As I appreciate the city's and Livermore Police Department's efforts to implement Campaign Zero's Eight Can't Wait policies, I am very concerned with how Mayor Marshawn and the Livermore PD has claimed that all eight policies have been adopted when in fact they have not. Livermore's rating is three, and it is updated in current. It is clear that Livermore has in fact not absorbed these policies in full and is simply interpreting their own policies to justify such claims. The Livermore PD and City of Livermore is not at liberty to accredit themselves, and if you do so, you should be transparent, as you claim you are, with the community you serve. On June 18th, I received an email from Mayor Marshawn where he claimed the following. I am proud to say that Livermore implemented all eight policies several years ago, and it is unfortunate that the Campaign Zero organization used old data in the report, and they have not updated it. This is misleading and frankly untrue. Just because you believe you are compliant doesn't mean you are. Clearly, Livermore is not compliant, and I'm very concerned that Mayor Marshawn and the Livermore PD continue to claim and/or insinuate you are in full compliance with these policies. You are misleading your community. It makes trusting each of you that much more challenging. I would appreciate a truthful and public statement to your community outlining that you indeed are not fully compliant, and what efforts, if any, you are making address this. Again, it is inappropriate to accredit yourself as it pertains to Eight Can't Wait, and the council/pd should not tout such claims. Efforts to meet these guidelines are not the same as adopting them. Please be forthcoming and honest with your community. Thank you. Then we also have a comment from Lisa. Livermore Black Lives Matter has made five demands of Livermore City and leaders. Have you read these demands, and what will you do as city leaders? Livermore citizens don't have much understanding of racism in our past, as is common in America. What immediate actions will you take to begin educating our citizens on our true past and the need for systemic changes? Please be specific. And we have, from Ruth Gaston to the City Council, I watched the documentary 13th, which tells the history of 400 years of racial abuse against blacks in the United States. It disturbed me. I am pleased to learn that the Livermore City Council plans to look at ways to improve police procedures. When you look at city hiring practices, perhaps you could also look for ways that local businesses might offer employment opportunities. In order to promote more, excuse me, in order to promote more diversity, I hope you will consider additional affordable housing in Livermore. I comment, I comment the City Council for taking action to right long-existing racial wrongs. Sincerely, Ruth Gaston, resident of Livermore since 1963. From Trivalley for Black Lives, the Eight Can't Wait comment, excuse me, the Eight Can't Wait campaign has proven to be ineffective and not actually reduce police violence. What is the city doing besides funding those ineffective policies to make our black community safer? In the Eight to Abolition campaign, one strategy is to invest in care, not cops. Here are some ideas. Allocate city funding towards healthcare infrastructure, including non-coercive mental health care, wellness resources, neighborhood-based trauma centers, non-coercive drug and alcohol treatment programming, peer support networks, and training for healthcare professionals. Make these services available for free to low-income residents. Adopt a care-not-cops model. Invest in teachers and counselors, universal childcare, and support for all family structures. Ensure investment in community-based food banks, grocery cooperatives, gardens, and farms. Invest in youth programs that promote learning, safety, and community care. How can the city start taking action with some of these? And then from Mark Palajek. Mayor Marshawn and City Council members, my name is Mark Palajek, and I'm speaking tonight as the Commissioner of the Livermore Housing Authority. These comments are offered not for the policing policies in Livermore, but for the environmental concerns expressed by some council members, specifically affordable housing. I believe that this council has demonstrated an appropriate concern for the adequacy of affordable housing in Livermore. I want to encourage you to continue these efforts and expand them where possible. As you well know, it takes a lot of resources and time to make a difference in affordable housing, and there are a lot of different ways to address these needs. It is gratifying to see that the City of Livermore has considerable list of projects you are pursuing. It is gratifying to see that the Livermore Housing Authority is included in the city plans, and there are several action items that the Housing Authority is keeping, the Housing and Human Services, our facilities in the years to come. Thanks for your continued support. There are a lot of Livermore residents who are depending on our collective resources. Sincerely, Mark Palajek, Commission Chair, Livermore Housing Authority. And then from Erica Engel. In the current Livermore Police Policy Manual, most of the policies that dictate whether or not disciplinary action is called for are subjected to the reasonable officer standard. But whether or not the action is in question meets this reasonable requirement is determined by fellow supervising officers. Officers investigating other coworkers is inherently biased. In other industries, food, quality, airline travel, et cetera, self-regulation practices have proven to lead to lowered standards of safety and are an increased risk to the public. To improve the transparency of the department's regulatory and disciplinary practices, whether questionable police actions are objectively reasonable, should be decided by an outside civilian oversight agency. The National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, NACOLE.org, and other resources show how cities can implement such a body and the proven benefits to both the police force and to the community at large. When will we see such a committee here? And then from Andrew Barker. Honorable Mayor and City Council, this agenda item falls in the discussion and direction section of the agenda, which I know from many council meetings is often an opportunity for you on the council to express feelings and sympathies with the public and talk about how troubled you are without taking any concrete action. I urge you to resist that temptation in this case. The Livermore Police Department is under your direction, and you do not need to wait for Chief Harris to slowly prepare reports and recommendations before you change anything. He is incentivized to make as few changes as possible and to delay as long as possible in making them. It does not make sense to punt your oversight responsibilities to the very department you are overseeing. You're the only civilian oversight in the Livermore Police Department, and it is your responsibility to determine their policies. Please take this duty seriously and act quickly. Please take this duty seriously and act quickly and forcefully to institute reform. Thank you. We have an anonymous comment. This is our changes in the city budget, for example, defunding the police and increase spending on other services such as mental health homelessness and affordable housing services subject to approval through a vote of the citizens of Livermore. From Addison Risby, Risby, I apologize if I mispronounced that to Mayor Marchand and the city and the Livermore City Council. Redirect money away from the Livermore Police Department and into mental health services, affordable housing and education. Work alongside Tri Valley for Black Lives to defund and divest. Prioritize the construction of affordable housing in the construction for the downtown plan. To Dr. Bowers and school administrators and principals, require or encourage that US history teachers cover topics such as redlining mass incarceration, system racism, et cetera. Incorporate more black and people of color authors in English curriculum. Require anti racism training informed by a black student perspectives for all public school teachers and administrators. In the high schools, create a group for black students led by black mentors to help them through high school and prepare them for college. Something similar to Maisha Beasley's A A S P African American Scholars Program from 2016 to 2018. From Evan. Thank you, council and staff for taking this issue seriously. This moment is a unique opportunity for us to accomplish change outside our imagination. With so much happening right now, we can look to repair past harms and make meaningful improvements in public safety and community outreach. This will not be an easy process, but I ask that you look to make the important immediate changes to policy needed while also continuing to look at larger and lasting changes needed. From an anonymous attendee. The last version of the Livermore Police Manual that I read, read through did not say that de escalation and other eight can't wait methods were required. The Livermore policy says officers should generally use de escalation techniques. Reference four, six, three point six, a gentler choice language than required. When can we see this get revised to be required in the police manual? There's also another anonymous attendee. Based on the numbers in attachment 14, there were 3,531 arrests in Livermore in 2019 and point one, six percent resulted in complaints. This appears to be six complaints for 3,531 arrests, correct? Okay, from Elizabeth. I'm going to B A U M A C H. How are they using data to understand bias on the force? How often are officers receiving reinforcement training for de escalation techniques and recognizing that force shouldn't be an option? From Ad. What can we do to keep police working on legitimate crimes and keep them away from mental health calls, well check petty crimes, et cetera? Could funds be diverted to new social worker peace officer division? I've from Brittany Kick. I appreciate the information shared tonight. I would love to hear about what bias and equity training city staff and council members are given in addition to the conversation around training of the police department. Okay. From Misty. I use the police manual on LPD's website to compare current policies to eight can't wait recommendations. And I found their info, found their information regardless of when it was compiled is substantially correct. From Corey Bennett. We should be very careful not to overly restrict officers' use of force when dealing with unrestrained, dangerous and or combative suspects. Officers must be able to defend themselves. They must be able to quickly and safely subdue a dangerous suspect with overwhelming force. People who use George Floyd's, excuse me, George Floyd's murder as an example, should be reminded that George was already in handcuffs. Use of force rules before versus after being restrained is a critical distinction. High levels of force may be appropriate to restrain someone, but not appropriate after. We should not put the cart before the horse, reducing police funding before fixing social problems is foolish. We must address other social issues first. And if that reduces crime and calls to LPD, then and only then restructuring police funding. I'd like to know what LPD officers and dispatch think about having something like Kahoots program of Eugene, Oregon to help them out. Okay, another anonymous attendee. At the last city council meeting, multiple members of council reference that changes to the police department will take time. While some necessary changes are long term projects, the city can reasonably create a plan for strategies ranging from immediate to the long term. The time we find ourselves in and the citizens of Livermore demand action to ensure that our children, our neighbors and ourselves are safe. Please provide a plan with those more immediate measures that will be taken. Okay. From Stephanie. S P O N A G L E. In the panel last week with unify Livermore, it seemed as though both the Livermore and Dublin Police Chiefs agreed that mental health calls constituted majority of calls. We then discussed defund the police with the intention of allocating more money towards the mental health resources. How can we work towards putting money into these resources? Okay, a few more. Anonymous. I would like to see the council and the Tri Valley make public forums and workshops where we invite members of the public, Black Lives Matter, police, nonprofit leaders, mental health workers, et cetera, to come and work together to begin to create pilot programs for new methods of responding to emergency response calls, civilian oversight, teaching about modern racial injustice and black authors in school and more. We need to not just listen, but come together and figure out how to make real change. And another anonymous attendee. Given the contentious state of those who want to defund the police and their willingness to use public shaming as a tactic to achieve their goals against the majority of Americans, 64% per ABC poll, who do not want to defund the police. I would highly recommend that input be anonymous via writing or online. From Jean Moran. Livermore PD gets a D score on police scorecard.org. What are the plans to address the areas of low score? I police accountability while funding is higher than 67% of departments in the state. From Lisa. I'm very proud to hear my fellow Livermore citizens stepping up to do what's right. Thanks for renewing my faith. Hashtag Black Lives Matter. Anonymous attendee. In a time is tumultuous as 2016, a time when slate.com declared 2016 is potentially the worst year in history, denouncing a two term black president who preceded him. Donnie chose to oust nearly every member of their of chair holder appointed by the prior administration. It was Trump's indignance that led us to riots and protests we see today all across America. The police have two choices, stand with the people or defend their commander in chief. Considering the difficult position of an officer of the law in today's climate, I cannot begin to comprehend the war Trump would wage on us if we were to stand down from our armed positions and sit with the opposition. It isn't an option. Trump has been inciting violence, propagating fear, dividing the nation since the day he decided to run for office. Our state governors are over his streck. Meeting these protests with violence and armed forces is obviously not the move. While our police force is acting on instinct to protect what they have been trained to protect citizens. Has anyone stopped to ask what your police officers are so scared of? And there is one more and that would be, that'll be the last one. Excuse me, just one second. Okay, as our policy, there was one person that put in multiple and I read the most current. So that concludes the public comment on Zoom.
Okay, anything on YouTube?
Honorable Mayor, nothing has been received on YouTube.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you. Okay, with that, I am going to close the public comment period. Well, we got a lot of comments on eight can't wait and defunding. But I think the, the whole thing that we're looking for is, is again, what this community engagement is going to look like. I heard a couple of folks mention Kahoots, the Kahoots model of Eugene, Oregon. That is actually funded by Lane County. And I think my perspective, it's a great idea. And I think that if we could get additional sources, resources from the county, that'd be a great place to start to have this conversation. Again, what I'm looking for tonight is how do we engage the community? How do we get, get input? I know that you, using Zoom meetings is a little bit tricky right now. I was in a Zoom meeting recently where we actually had about 60 people in the meeting and then we broke up into individual rooms of four people or eight people. So I think that type of process might work, but, but maybe, but I want to look right, I'm going to step back for a moment. I want to hear from everybody else here about what you think is going to be the most successful process for this council, because we are absolutely all committed on this. How do we make sure that we come out of this, this conversation? And as one of the persons said, come together, listen and make real change. Customer Monroe.
So I actually want to do something a little bit preliminary to that. And I am wondering if Mr. Alcala maybe would be the right person to do it, but maybe not. And that is, again, I think we have a lot of people and I'm so delighted that that is the case, who maybe are not familiar with the process and why we're actually having this discussion now as opposed to maybe last council meeting. And so simply understanding that we have to do this in a transparent way. We can't take action without doing, you know, with, without having this meeting. And so the sort of the speed that government works. A basic introduction to here's transparency in government, you're seeing it now.
Well, okay, to that point, customer Monroe. One of the reasons this has to be such a large discussion and I sincerely mean that in a community discussion is last year. I heard from hundreds of students because last year there were actually in this nation, we averaged one school shooting a week. A school shooting a week, there were three in California. Last year in 2019, there were more mass shootings. There are 14, 417 mass shootings in the United States. And I heard from hundreds of high school students here in Livermore that they were concerned for their safety. They were concerned when they came to school and they wanted to make sure that they would be safe. And what we heard from the students last year is that they wanted the assurance that there would be more police officers to protect them. And we actually worked with the school district to get a grant to help provide more school resource officers. So now we're hearing. I heard comments that they should be taken away. So this is why this has to be a very large conversation is because last year, what we heard from the students is they wanted more security from the police officers. And now there's a shift where we're hearing people saying they want to defund the police officers. So we need to have a very large conversation in the community about what we do to ensure people's safety so that people feel safe in our community. And that's why I want to get as much input as possible. Because last year, the focus was, was some different. This year, it's different again. So that's why this has to be a large conversation.
I'm doing something far more basic than that, which is simply just making sure once again, that people understand that the process we're going through is simply setting the terms of this, not actually solving the problem. And the reason we're doing that, so thank you, Mr. Alcala, I think I can handle this. The reason we're doing this is because we have to have it be transparent. So the size of the discussion, the scope of the discussion, that's a separate issue. But the very fact that we actually can't take a lot of the action that's being requested of us has to do with the nature of city, well, the nature of government in general. And particularly the fact that, that when an item is on the agenda, we get to do what's on the agenda. And what's on the agenda now is determining this. I just want to make, you know.
Right. And it's doing all of this, it's doing all of this in public. And I see Bob Carling has his hand in the air.
Right, thank you. I'm not sure. I, I'm just going to go through some comments or a summary of some of the things that I heard. And we can do with it what you want. One is, and we got several emails about this, about affordable housing and including in downtown. So that leads me to believe that our messaging on affordable housing, whether it's downtown or in the Pacific or the new places on Chestnut. And by the way, they're now accepting applications for the family housing on Chestnut for low income folks. The work at Avance out on First Avenue. So somehow I think it would be, and we doesn't need a big discussion about this, somehow we need to get that information out to people in a way that is clear. I mean, these are decisions we've already made and for some reason there are a portion of the folks in the community that don't know this. And so that was one thing that I thought about. Short, we had some, and I had written this down before tonight, and somebody brought it up as, are there things that we could look at in the immediate term versus the more mid and longer term? And I, you know, it sort of hearkens back to the homeless subcommittee in terms of the way we implemented some of those things. Are there some things that we can do immediately to show progress? And I know there have been, there's been some criticism that that we just won't do that. Because we're hamstrung and I think what to what council member Monroe was talking about. I mean, again, it involved, this involves a process even for things that are short term or more immediate. There is a process that we have to follow as public elected offices. One of the things that I think would also be important is where the, I think some people have looked at the LPD budget. But I think it'd be interesting to, to look and illustrate where this goes. And I'll give you an example. There's also been a fair amount of call for mental health resources. And I think, as I understand it, Horizon budget for the mental health folks in town comes out of the police budget. And so I think one of the things we could have immediate discussion about is, is that the right balance? I mean, I, so for example, if we have, I'm going to pick a number. If we have six people that work at Horizons dealing with mental health issues, does hiring seven or eight increasing it by two, by one or two more, does that help? And I don't have any idea. I have no idea. But I don't think we can just throw, we can just ask the LPD to rearrange their budget to hire mental health officers when they may not be needed. And again, I don't know what that looks like. And I think that'd be an important thing to have a discussion with the public because I don't, I don't know enough about how that the LPD budget is spent. And I'm confident that the citizens don't either. And so I think that'd be an important thing. And John, I know you mentioned Kahoots and I, I didn't go and look it up. My thought about Kahoots was we ought to take advantage of what other communities have found as beneficial and not just decide, oh, we can't do it because we don't have any budget from the county. I mean, I don't, I mean, we ought to take, again, we ought to take advantage of things that have worked in other communities and evaluate whether we think they might work here or not. And it doesn't mean that we have to do it or that we can't do it because there's no budget from the county. If we think it's important, then maybe we ought to figure out how to get it funded. So those are just some thoughts that I have after reading some of the comments that we've gotten over the last week or so, as well as some of the, some of the comments tonight on Zoom. So thanks.
Okay, customer Coomer.
Yeah, well, I was, I was gratified in my email during the last couple of weeks that our support of the police department in this town was about 10 to one for those who want to defund the police department. And I don't know that people actually think, there's got to be some education about what defund the police department means. Because frankly, it's been used so many. It's almost cliche right now because we're not really, you know, we're not going to obviously remove our police. you know, we're not gonna obviously remove our police department as part of the city operations. If you really want to see some problems, let them. But there has to be more, uh, more community discussion.
Uh-oh.
Think you froze up. Oh, you're back. Okay, uh.
I got muted here and I had dumped out for some reason, but.
There you go. You're back.
Uh, yeah, yeah, he just kicked me to my email for whatever reason, so. Um, but, but I'm an ex-cop. I respect and understand what a police officer goes through every day, every minute of every day. Um, if I were to sit down for an hour with somebody or go over my finest hours in Oakland, um, you know, people might be shocked. And I want to under, make sure that people understand, because I use this, I heard this term used very much police force. We don't have a police force. We have a police department. They are people just like us. They're doing a job they were hired to do and, and we expect them to do it well. And as we have found out in the past, when they don't, they're gone. We, that happens in this town. It has happened during my tenure. So, uh, I, that's what most need to understand. That instead of making a, a, a national cliche situation, let's talk locally. Let's talk about our department. What changes can we made? What, what has caused this outcry for change? When so many of these issues are, have already been resolved, or at least are in the, in process of being resolved by our, our police department here in town.
Uh, Vice Mayor Warner.
Uh, a, a couple of thoughts and listening to this, and I agree with what fellow council members have said. Uh, what I hear is even from the beginning of this, we don't have an agreement on what the facts are or how to interpret it. Are we compliant with the various requests or not? So that, that's the first thing we've got to do is at least somehow arrive at what is reality? And what's the perception of it? But there's clearly, there is one reality and there are multiple perceptions. And we've got to have a way to get through that. So I've heard that. I've also heard that we've made good progress under Chief Harris towards the, the right, uh, policies and culture. But I've also heard that we could do better and that there's an openness on the part of the department to do that and to work collaboratively to improve and with the community. I've heard that, um, we need to have a broad engagement with the community. And I, I agree with that. And just for perspective, you know, we had the, the thing on the downtown. And, you know, we all got worked up on the downtown and look at how insignificant really it is compared to what we're dealing with now. And we had a subs committee, uh, and outreach committee. We had multiple meetings and that was just on what to do with a few acres, right? This is way more important. We had the, uh, subcommittee on the homelessness as that problem grew in our awareness of the, of the need to really tackle it substantially. So I believe that given those past things, which are important, but what's really facing us now is, is way more, that we should have a subcommittee. And that we've got a lot of things to work through here. And we've got to do it deliberately and with, as was pointed out, and with the right open process. I've also heard that there are things that we need to do immediately. But in order to decide what those immediate things are, we have to agree on what the facts are that would compel us to take action. So that's the first step in my mind is let's decide what is. And let's work with the various people that have weighed in and let's agree. I mean, if we can't even agree on what the facts are, then we have a real problem here. So let's get that figured out. I think, um, that we do need to have a plan, as was pointed out by Councilmember Carling and one of the public comment, that we need the immediate, the short term, uh, mid, midterm and the long term and a comprehensive plan. And so there are things we can do immediately perhaps, but it's gonna take time to develop a good plan. Uh, and then the other thing that I've also heard here were, were comments not only on the downtown housing, but what kind of education do we need in the school system, et cetera? So another vehicle that we have here to tackle this is to work through our, uh, other government agencies, through our intergovernmental committee, the school district, park district, college. And they can also be part of this. But I think we do need to launch a subcommittee to figure out the immense amount of things we have to do to begin to tackle this issue. So that's, um, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, uh, well articulated. And I'm, I was going to save this for matters initiated, but I'll go ahead and tip my hand right now. Uh, I recently received a communication from Supervisor Nate Miley's office. And he, uh, asked me to participate, uh, in a, uh, racial justice working group, uh, to bring all of Elmeti County and the fourteen cities together to have an even larger dialogue on, on a county scale. And, and recognizing how long a process this is going to be and a significant commitment. I recognize that the continuity is going to be extremely important because you don't want to, uh, make progress. And then all of a sudden, when somebody leaves, you've lost that progress. So, so Vice Mayor, since you've suggested this, uh, subcommittee, I would like you, uh, to be the City of Livermore's representative on the Racial Justice Working Group for Elmeti County. And if you accept that, would you be willing in that capacity to as well, uh, chair the subcommittee as we move ahead with this community conversation for Livermore? And then help continue that, uh, on the county level as well?
I would, and, and I don't say that lightly because this is not a, uh, a simple problem. But I, I will, uh, be willing to help here. And I think there could be a good synergy between the county level subcommittee and the one that we have as part of our council to handle this problem. And, uh, and of course, my thing about a subcommittee and these working groups is that I'm not trying to do this all alone. So I, I would welcome the opportunity to work with the fellow council members and the community on this.
Okay, great. Well, as I said, the reason, I, I recognize that I'm going to be gone in, in, in five months. Uh, I turn out. So that's why I think it's important to have this continuity. Because this is going to be a, a much longer conversation. That doesn't mean that we can't get things done and the progress won't be made in that five months. But it's going to be longer than that to ensure ongoing progress. So if you'd be willing to do that, uh, one of the things that we've heard a lot is that there's the need for, uh, social services that police officers are frequently called upon to do social service, to deal with people that are, uh, tackling things like substance abuse and, and mental illness. Uh, and I just happen to have somebody who's a social services, uh, trained individual, uh, on, on my council. Uh, Councilmember Monroe, so.
To, just to clarify, I do sociology. That's.
Sociology, social services, social services works for me.
They both have social in them, but I do theory. I don't do the real work, just to be clear.
Right. But, but you, you, you have training in.
I do. That is a true fact.
So would you be willing to work with Vice Mayor Warner, uh, on the subcommittee?
This is, this is one of my passions, so absolutely.
Okay. Well, because you, you're, you're working, I, with the county on some of the other homelessness issues that we're dealing with.
Along, along with Councilmember Carling, who is honestly, I cannot say enough good about him. So, yeah, um.
Great.
Yeah, yeah.
So then you, as a subcommittee, the two of you then can start to put some of the, you know, what this outreach is going to look, look like and, and start working this process. Uh, and then hopefully try to come back and report as this begins to evolve. And hopefully we can, we can help you, uh, sort of get the, the rails on, on how this is gonna work.
Yeah, but, but we don't actually, I think we have some more discussion to do. Please tell me we have some more discussion to do.
No, actually we do. But, but I think, but I, I, I really appreciate, uh, Vice Mayor Warner's, uh, suggestion that, as you said, the city moves slow, government moves slowly. But if you can, if you don't have to have a noticed Brown Act meeting every single time you want to discuss this, you can move faster. And I think to your point, this will enable this process to move faster.
Right.
Well, I'd like to also just add here is that we do have the, uh, homeless subcommittee. And I think we decided the last time that it's gonna continue for a while. And the, there is a lot of synergy between those two, you know, this new one we're talking about and that one. And since that involves three of us, we'll have to figure out how to, uh, properly coordinate. But I'm sure there's a way to do that. But there is a tremendous, um, synergy that we need to take advantage of. And then, of course, we'll be coming back periodically as a council of five. So we'll, one of the things to figure out, and we'll have to work with, uh, the city attorney on it, is actually how do we have the right series of meetings where we collect all the ideas in the appropriate way?
Look, can we talk a little bit about scope and time? Because I think that's, yeah. So when I think about this, um, I, you know, we can go back. So, so we, we can go back four hundred years to the beginnings of the structural racism we seem to date. The slavery and black white relations, um, have structured this country from the very beginning. So one of the things I want to say to people who want a solution immediately is, um, it would feel really good. And that's not actually possible, nor would it be a good idea. Um, you don't solve four hundred years, uh, even with progress along the way, um, overnight. So, so one thing is let's, let's look at the scope. And when I think about this, I would say that the long term for a city, the long, is to keep people engaged, we probably, you know, two years is about right, depending on the scope of what we're trying to accomplish. And again, thinking about that along the way, it's really hard. So that's on the one hand. On the other hand, it's hard. We are a, a, a Twittered society. Um, I'm probably dating myself at this point. I don't know. What is it? Snapchat, TikTok, whatever. Um. We have to be able to, all of us together, stay with this. So that's the short term and the medium term and the long term. I'm not quite sure what that, what that looks like, but I, I think timeframe needs to be around two years. Second of all, in terms of scope, um, it needs to both, I believe, when, again, I look at structural racism and it goes to the education system, it goes to housing and goes, goes, uh, and in fact, Livermore, um, has issues with redlining that have shaped it, which, you know, um, may, you know, we no longer formally exist. Do they exist at this point? I don't know. Do we want to investigate those? I don't know. That certainly doesn't speak to the policing that we're talking about. But the reason I'm talking about the structural piece of this is because all of those things fit together. And so how much of it do we want to, you know, do we want to stay just with the police? Because to me, and actually Black Lives Matter, they're in, in their demands spoke to that. They did speak to putting a, a bunch of these pieces together. Some of them are our responsibility. Some of those are, are the school district's responsibility. Um, so what, how narrow or broad a scope do we want to think about? Um, and then who are we, do we need to be involved with? Obviously, Black Lives Matter, but there's, I mean, as, um, Councilmember Coomer said, my mail wasn't, I think, ninety, it, it, it was, it was, I got a lot of mails saying, don't, you know, don't defund the police. We love our police. I'm like, I don't think I'm talking about making the police go away, um, entirely. But there's some education that needs to be done on both sides and bringing both sides of the, uh, and, and, you know, I'm hearing some real division in some of the comments. So, uh, bringing all sides together needs to be part of the process. So those are, you know, defining those three areas, I think, is, it's really important.
Well, I think a good place to start, uh, 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 Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I guess I disagree a little bit. I think, I think dealing with the police is what we talked about at the last meeting as being the priority. And goodness knows, I hope it doesn't take us two years to figure that out. I mean, I appreciate if we're gonna include education and housing and so on and so forth. That probably is a longer conversation. But I think we need to deal with, uh, addressing the police issues in much more timely fashion than taking two years. So I don't know what it is, but it ought to be like, I mean, there are some things we can do immediately. I mean, for example, the chokehold business or the carotid, however it's described, has been changed. And I'm not sure everybody in the city knows that. Um, so, I mean, that's one thing that has been immediate. And so I think we ought to, over the next, I don't know, three to six months at the most, uh, deal with the police issues and come up with some recommendations and put them in place and then see, see what happens. I mean, I don't think, we're not gonna know a final answer here, maybe ever. But I think we need to, to say, okay, let's, let's do what we can over the next several months and, um, see how it works and then deal with these other things, systemic racism and so on of all, in a longer period of time. So I think we ought to shoot for much shorter time and focus on the police.
This is, I think this is one of the problems that we run into is that we've heard a lot of discussion tonight saying that we don't meet the eight can't wait. And yet we've heard from our police chief that we are in substantial compliance with those. There may be some difference on semantics, but if, if we get hung up on semantics, we're never gonna get to the substance.
So fix the semantics. So fix the semantics. I don't, I mean, I don't think it's hard.
Right. So, but if we're gonna get to the substance, the other thing is that we, we've heard this, the discussion about, um, taking the money from the police department and putting it into education or putting into youth programs. I agree with, uh, Councilmember Carling that there are, we've heard that they want immediate changes. And maybe what we would look at is, is fixing the semantics around the, uh, uh, around the substantial, substantial compliance. Uh, as I said, I, it's been established that the most recent data that they used was two thousand sixteen on the Campaign Zero. That's agreed upon, two thousand sixteen. You look on the website, our, our manual is, uh, from twenty twenty, from this year. So let's fix the semantics in, in the short term, uh, so that we can start moving towards substance. Uh, on the other hand, we've heard, again, talking about youth programs and education. Uh, the City of Livermore doesn't do youth programming. This, the Livermore Area Recreation and Park District does a wonderful job with youth programming. Uh, they're talking about education. The school district does a great job with education. So maybe this is something to bump over to the Intergovernmental Committee and to get a sense there on how we can start working all of these components that people want. If they want to start using money from the police department for other things, or maybe we can optimize the, uh, the funding for the police department. Uh, let's have those conversations as well. Uh, this is, this is gonna be big. So we can look for the short term benefits, those semantic issues if we can. Uh, and then going into the long-term programs, uh, and const, that's like the education and youth programs. Uh, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Warner, see your hand up.
Hey, well, I, I agree with the, the need to get results sooner rather than later. And I also agree that the way to do that is to focus on the issues that are there possibly with the police. The other thing I would add to this is I've learned over the course of my career, make sure you understand the problem before you start putting forth solutions. I think that's the first step is to have an agreement on what the problem is. We have a lot of different perceptions. We don't have agreements on the facts. So let's make sure we first get the community to agree on the problem is we're gonna solve before we start losing a bunch of solutions.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Monroe.
Yeah, so I would, I would agree with that. I would also say that I'm, I'm. I'm, I'm, I'm actually not that concerned with the policy manual and the semantics. I mean, we can fix that or not. What, but, you know, the, the policy, policies can be written, and this is not to speak to Livermore's policies, just in general. A policy manual can be written in lots of ways. The question is, how well does it actually function? And what we are hearing from many of the, the people speaking tonight is they're not convinced it does necessarily. I want us to look at each other and recognize that, you know, I am what passes for diversity on this city council. And the only thing that makes me different from all of you is that I'm a woman. We are old, we are white, we are, you know, all of us relatively well off. And that's, you know, I'm good with that. I'm comfortable with who I am. But we are not by any means representative of all of Livermore. And so when we speak to what our experiences have been and, and, you know, however, look, I mean, I've had great experiences with, with the police department, but why wouldn't I have? I have watched the police department in operation and I've been very impressed with their dedication, particularly in working with the homeless population. But that doesn't mean I can say that that's true for all of Livermore. So but, so I, I think that we really do need to make sure that we are speaking, we are, we are reaching out to all of Livermore to understand their experiences. And again, this is, I, I, what I hear from the police department is, look, this is right in what they want to be able to do too. They want to get information. They want to improve. They want to excel. So I think that that certainly needs to be part of it. I don't know about the three to six months. I do hear the desire. I mean, look, I'm, I have a tendency for scope creep. Anybody who knows me knows this. So, you know, I can see narrowing it, but let's just make sure we are gathering the information. That information comes from, from our, our citizens, our residents.
And, and that, you hit, you come straight to the point. How do we do that? How do we ensure, just like we do the downtown, we had a number of stakeholders involved in the downtown. But how do we make sure that we hear from the people that we need to hear from? And how do we, it's, it's easy, it's, it's easier to, to, to march down the street. That's the easy part. The hard part is doing all of the work after that, going to the meetings, getting the input, providing the input, working with the electors, working on the legislation, working on the change and making that happen. That's a, that's a long, difficult process, and we may need to make sure that we can keep people engaged in this as we move ahead so that we can hear the stories and then we can have that dialogue with the community. So how do we ensure that we get that dialogue and we hear from the people that we need to hear from?
So I'll, I'll remind you that with the downtown, one of the things that impressed me, and again, and this is professionally, with the downtown process was bringing in, I'm sorry, we've got, we've got noise in the background here, apologize. Was, was bringing in placeworks to, you know, do the careful gathering of data, of, of, of information from the community as a whole. And, you know, so I think that, you know, we can't do, you know, this is, this is not, none of us are trained in this, and it's not the city staff's expertise either. This is where, you know, I think we do have to find somebody who's, who's expert in the field.
Well, okay, but then how do we, how do we select the stakeholders? Now, with the downtown, we were able to pick nineteen different stakeholders, and each of those stakeholders then selected their representative. So how do we cast a wide enough net to make sure that we hear from the members of the community that we need to listen to?
Well, Black Lives Matter said that they're willing to work with us.
Well, yeah, but, but then that's, they're self-selected. So how do we reach out to the, the thirty percent of the Latinos in the community? And the, how do we get the whole demographic here? And listen to everyone. Yet there, there are subgroups that are already stepped up. But how do we get that broad community engagement that's going to be so important so that we get the buy-in from the community, that everybody acknowledges that they've been heard?
Well, I'm not sure. Well, you're liking it that this is going to be like the downtown steering committee. I'm not, I guess I didn't, I didn't come to that conclusion. The, the homeless subcommittee was run differently than that. We didn't have any stakeholders on a larger committee like we did for the downtown. I'm not sure your conclusion about the downtown steering committee was correct when everybody thought they were heard. I mean, that was the great, that was the great.
Somebody spent a lot of money.
I don't want to get, go down that rabbit hole, but I, I'm not, I'm not convinced that that's the way we should do it. I mean, no, I understand your question and I don't have an answer. I'm just not sure mimicking the downtown steering committee is the right approach.
No, that was the way we did it one time. I mean, there was another time we did this, another issue in North Livermore where it was, we opened it up to everybody and we had huge meetings with, you know, a couple hundred people. And we set up tables to listen to everyone and to get, get input that way. So that was, that was the way we did that. I just, we did the downtown. That was one way that we did it. But we really can't have a large, we, we can't get the, the, ready to get, get a big hall and bring everybody together. So how do we get the community input, you know, to, yeah, how do we, how do we list, get to the people so we can listen to them and, and get the input so we can start implementing the, the reforms? I saw Bob Warner, Vice Mayor Warner's hand was up, and then over to Councilmember Monroe.
I would just suggest that we could probably spend the rest of the night here and into the morning trying to answer that question. I think that I only reference the downtown and those others because that's, we needed to have a steering committee. I, I don't know what the answer is to how to do it. I think what we can accomplish tonight is acknowledging that what we want is the broadest input possible. How that's done, not clear. I do also agree with the thought that we ourselves are not expert on this. I was about to ask a city manager to perhaps weigh in. But I do think we are likely to have to engage a consultant to help us here or some firm. I think that would be a faster and better way to get there. It's definitely not cheaper. But it, it may be what we have to do. I don't know. But can we all agree we want broad input that's representative of the city?
Absolutely.
Yes.
The other thing to think about, and it was brought up in some of these other meetings, is that we're not just trying to get the input necessarily in percent of the particular demographic within the city. Because some demographics have experienced much more pain here than others. So somehow we're going to not just weight this by sheer numbers, we're going to have to weigh it by impact or concern somehow. So I don't know what the answer is. And all I can say is we need to go about it. We're not going to solve it tonight. What I would suggest is that the subcommittee go away, work with city staff, and come back at the next council meeting with a set of options, and we'll see if it's good enough. That's where I would go.
Beat me to it.
We just want to make sure that everyone feels safe in our community. I think that's, that's the goal, is that, I believe that people, everyone should feel safe in this community.
And that's very good, because we actually hadn't heretofore articulated the goals.
So that'll be part of what you come back with.
Right. But we have, in addition to, before you start doing something, you kind of have to know what salt, problem you're trying to have, you're solving. But I think we also have to come back with, what are the goals? What are the measures that would say that you've achieved your goals? What are we trying to do? There's a lot of concern. There's a lot of concern based on our, the experience within the community. But I also see a lot of concern based on extrapolation of events happening outside this community and saying, oh, this community must, it has a police department, so it must have the same problems at the same level. So we've got a lot of work to do to define our situation and to come up with a, an appropriate path forward.
Uh, customer, uh, Trish, customer.
Um, so I appreciate what Vice Mayor Warner said. I, he said it much more particularly than I would have, but similar, similar thoughts. I wanted to say one thing about a place where we could go fairly quickly. One of the emails I got made a particular impression on me, and that was of somebody who said that this person really appreciated the police being present when a spouse died and walking through the process. And my immediate thought was, that's actually a place where we could think about, this is, this is an, this is a place where role creep really struck me. There's, why are the police, why is this something that the police are, are doing? Yes, I understand someone has died and they need to come and check, but taking a look at the grief counseling versus the, huh, yes, died from natural causes are two different functions, actually. So as we're looking at this, I do think that there are places within Livermore where we can look to, you know, to, to make those kinds of small changes as well. And yes, I mean, going away and coming back with a more defined plan as a subcommittee sounds like a good idea to me.
Okay. And part of that would be, as you pointed out, what are, what are roles that are more appropriate for police officers versus bringing in someone from, from say Horizons? But people, when people call the police, they expect a police officer to show up. So, because that's, we're, we're nine-one-one, we're the emergencies. So that's, first responders are the ones that show up because they're expected. I think she probably wouldn't have expected someone to come in as a, from social services.
Well, as I said, there's probably was, you know, if there's a death, there's a role for the police, but that role may be limited where, you know, some, yeah. Social services may be coming.
Okay. So this is going to be part of this, defining what the problem is, and then what are our ultimate goals? So great. I will look forward to, to having you guys come back and setting all that up. So great. Any other questions or comments at this point? I guess the city manager is going to weigh in at this, this juncture?
Yes. So Honorable Mayor, I do understand our direction to work with the subcommittee to return with something for the entire council to consider. And the last part of this particular item on your agenda is consideration of the resolution before you.
Yes.
So I'll move the resolution. Or do we need to go through more details? I jumped the, I got ahead of it too quick.
I see no other comments. I have a, a motion.
I'll second.
Second. Give it a damn.
Carling got in first. Okay, so motion made by Vice Mayor Warner, seconded by Councilmember Carling. Any discussion of that motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marchand.
Hi. Thank you very much. Six point oh-two, the, see, portion of the west-facing wall of the Bankhead Theater to be included in the 2020 mural festival. I'll tell you, some of the murals that we're getting downtown for this festival are absolutely spectacular. Some amazing artists out there. So this is a, including the Bankhead Theater in, in a mural. So I will hand this off to staff.
Honorable Mayor, this is your city manager, Mark Roberts. And at this point, I am going to introduce your Director of the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, Adam Vandewater, who's going to lead us through this particular item this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand, council members. City Manager mentioned Adam Vandewater, your Director of Innovation and Economic Development. I'm going to share my screen. See if that pops up for you. Tonight, we'll be discussing whether we, you'd like to proceed with a motion to include a portion of the western-facing stucco Bankhead Theater wall in the 2020 mural festival. I do have the organizer of the festival here on the Zoom call with us, but I wanted to walk you through a little bit of how we have envisioned this going forward. So there are eight murals downtown. As the mayor referenced, many of them are now complete along First and on Second Street. Tonight's action is whether to include the Bankhead Wall owned by the city in the mural festival. Some of the murals that you may have seen to date are shown here. And we have Phasm Creative with the Hope mural on the side of Way Up Art and Frame, Madeline Tonzies on the side of Karate Jewelers reading left to right across the top, behind the Chamber of Commerce off of First Street. There's the side of Cal Water on the middle of the second row, the, the old theater mall in the square center. Just off of First Street and an empty lot is under production now, maybe coming to completion, and Trent can speak to that. Behind Story Coffee on Old First, welcome to downtown Livermore, and one just completed at Valley Dance in the last couple of days. These have been getting very positive reviews from the community as they venture out and experience them, as well as from some of our commissioners for the Commission for the Arts. The Bankhead Wall, as you'll recall, is mostly historic brick, but there's a portion very lightly outlined here in black, which is stucco. And that is the portion that is being proposed for inclusion in the festival. This is as it appears today. The proposed mural concept would be led by Trent Thompson, the organizer of the mural festival. And he is proposing a mural that would have a painter with a wet brush painting and abstract design. This is a rough sketch of what it might look like in situ in the wall itself. Then we'll get into a little closer view of that. But Trent is, is wanting to depict the value of art, theater, and culture in our lives. And he's basing this concept on the Picasso quote that art washes away from the soul, the dust of everyday life. And that quote would be hidden on the arm of the artist. You'll see in the next slide, almost as a tattoo on his forearm. And it'll be creating the illusion that the artist is painting life into the wall and into the sky itself. To make this mural a staple of local identity, Trent proposes subtle patterns and symbols such as grapes, theaters, fountain, cowboys within the clothing of the artist. And the symbols will be, will appear as a pattern, but as you approach as a pedestrian will be clearly identifiable. So here is a detail of the mural. The concept is still under some level of refinement, but you can see the painter's brush dripping to the right with some of those icons and patterns visible within the folds of his clothing. Some unfinished elements of the wall as if it's in progress, and there'll be some rough brush marks to that and a sort of peeling away of a more finished portion to the left. And you'll recall from the rendering in situ, there is some trees that are in existence there today that are proposed to remain even in a future hotel concept on the lot adjacent to it. So there is less definition to the lower-left quadrant as a result of that obscure, but there will be various references to the history of the Livermore Valley there. And you see some estimates there. I wanted to invite the organizer to, to answer any questions you may have of his creative process or his vision here. But I also wanted to share that we've been in close conversation with the Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center, the, at the time incoming, but now Executive Director Chris Carter had written the letter of support both for including the wall and for Uh, both for including the wall and for the concept um, as a window into uh, what happens within the building to the passersby on Livermore Avenue. That it would suggest that confluence of art and activity and uh, enlivening to an otherwise uh, fairly blank wall. So. Uh, with that, I'll conclude my uh, presentation and be available for any questions and turn those over to the uh, Trent Thompson, who's with us again uh, this evening.
Oh, yeah, uh, nice to talk to all you. Um, Adam, thank you very much. I think you covered it pretty well. Um, are there any questions? I'm, I'm here to try and answer whatever.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, bring it, do, does the council have any questions at this point? Uh, Councilmember Carling.
So uh, Adam, go back to. That one. So that's different. Than the one you showed us. With the, the mural on the bankhead.
So Trent can speak to this, the uh, the painter here has not changed. You can just barely with a uh, a. Close squint to make out the lettering on his forearm um, and symbols within his clothing. Uh, Trent is the artist can speak to this, but he's been uh, working to incorporate your feedback to include some of the historic iconography of the valley. Um, and to incorporate it in a way that shows he's adding some color, some vibrance and some uh, kind of modern touch to uh, to the wall, but I don't know, Trent, if you wanted to.
Well, let me just ask, I mean, is it what, what I'm seeing now on the slide that says mural detail, is that? More akin to what he's proposing?
Yes, I think with the uh, with the prior concept, it was, it was a bit more of um. To show the initial impact of the wall, um, of having the artwork there. And I think um, based on some of the feedback that I had heard from a few of you or that was relayed to me, um, that the design has sort of been developing. So this is, this is the most current uh, concept, and of course, there's going to be um, you know, some decisions made on the wall as far as minor details and patterns and. Um, textures and things like that, but as far as the general layout and concept, um, this is, this is where we're at.
Well, I appreciate it because I think I like this a whole lot better than the other one. The you, Adam may have. Uh, provided my comments, but I, this I really like.
Well, thank you. Yeah, of course.
Uh, anybody, uh, Councilmember Monroe?
Yeah, so I would, I would second that. This is, I, and I think part of it is just that what we saw was a um, much more of a uh, placeholder. Much more placeholders in play in various places. I, I too appreciate the uh, it's evolving concept. My one concern is over on the left, um, the Native American in headdress. Looks fairly uh, I'm called stereotypical and I'm somewhat concerned um, about. Is there another way that perhaps, I mean, th- this is land that we sit on that uh, was a loanee land, but. The mayor has the full list. I can go as far as a loanee and me walk. If you'd like to to add on, feel free. Um, but we know that we said we, that this land was originally not our land. Um, so is there a way that we can make it more specific to the people who live here?
Yes, I think um, so to sort of address the previous question, this is the most up to date concept, but one of the things that is still a bit in development is. The specific intricacies of the, the detailed work on the left side. Um, so I suppose there's still a bit of placeholder going on, so I've actually been doing some research. Um, specifically on the Alonins or Alonies. Um, and have sort of a catalog of images that I'm sort of um, collaging together, sort of figure out what, what that's going to end up. Um, being it's sort of, it's going to be probably, probably the, like, the left side will be one of the last sides of the, of the mural. Um, but I just definitely want to make sure that's representative of, you know, the actual people in the actual history here in Livermore.
So the best person to tap into for that is uh, uh, Mary Putoff from the uh, Native American Association here in Livermore. They're over by the uh. Uh, Jack's or uh, the Junction School. And uh, Mary Putoff is a wonderful resource, uh, and it's the Amewox, Alonies, and the Yokuts. Uh, that, that inhabited this area. So she's a, a great resource. She can provide you, in fact, uh, they do. Uh, Native American dances uh, as part of programs in front of the bankhead and some of the outfits that she has. Uh, some of the regalia are uh, very similar to the drawing that you have. So uh, check in with her and she uh, she'd be a great resource. Mary Putoff.
Poota, appreciate that.
Certainly. Uh, Councilmember Carling?
Oh. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, so I thought, I saw your hand there. Um, Vice Mayor Warner?
I, I like the uh, the design and when I heard Adam say that it was going to be the local. Symbols from the valley. And what did you say, Adam? I think I heard you say the cowboys, the grapes. And yet I don't see that here. I mean, what I see is, is okay, but I'm not seeing. The words match the picture, so.
Look at his pants.
Yeah, I can touch, I can touch on that a bit. So um, I think the, the verbiage was that it was, it would be subtle, subtle patterns, almost an Easter egg, something. In the line of that where the patterns in the pants would, would appear almost as. Just like if, if someone were wearing a textured shirt with a pattern on it, you might not catch the, the specific pattern. Um, but that those patterns on the pants would, would uh, would be those, those subjects.
Oh, but they're not. Am I supposed to see them now or, because with my graphics here, I'm not?
Um, a bit, you can maybe see like a grapevine and um, not all of it showing through, but if you look at the gray part on the, the lower, the lower part of the pant leg. You can see some of the patterns are.
So I'm, I'm all for the uh, the uh, diversity and, and, and the, the range of patterns. I'm, I'm looking at the uh, is that, that's a flower in the middle? I don't, what, what does that represent?
The, the flower in the, in the very middle of the, of the concept?
Yeah, well, in the, you know, the lower part of the swoosh.
Just uh, it's a calla lily, just the, the state flower.
Okay.
And the, the general idea is that.
The calla lily is a state flower?
I'm sorry.
I thought it was a poppy.
On flower. Thank you.
California poppy?
As soon as I said it, I was hoping nobody caught it, but you, you're, you're quick.
Because Jackson Perkins roses were here in Livermore for a number of years, but uh, uh, if you've got a California poppy there, then, then sure, I understand the uh, the reason for that. Um, not, not to get too picky here, but there's an image of a woman uh, just to the left of the flower, but I, I, I can't quite make out what that is.
Uh, it's, it's sort of a um, tribute to the fact that it's a theater. It's a, it's a dancer, which.
Okay.
Um, well, it, it'll make more sense on the, keep in mind, this is, this is a very large scale, um, when you see it in real life.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Will there be another iteration of the concept or how, how does the final uh, get decided?
Um, yeah, this, this would be the final iteration as far as the approval process, uh, much like the way we've been um, doing the rest of the murals around town. So this would be. Um, I, I guess the final approval of the concept and then um, we would, we would start work on the wall and. From there, of course, the details and things would develop, but this would be the, the general idea.
So just to recount the, the history, um, the festival was a policy and program grant from the Commission of the Arts. Um, that was approved by the council over the winter uh, in the amount of ten thousand dollars, and that was to coordinate the various artists. Had to work with the property owners to develop the criteria with the commission. Um, and to match the artists to the walls and select those themes, make sure they were appropriate and uh, reflective of that criteria. Uh, and to implement, at the time, it was to be a festival with a kind of interactive, public facing uh, portion to it. Um, and Trent has cleverly adapted that into a COVID friendly art walk happening later at the end of the month. Um, but the festival atmosphere was no longer permitted. Um, so the action before you tonight is a motion to include the wall. Um, uh, based on this uh, uh, schematic and that Trent. Will incorporate any additional feedback you may have for the iconography that shows both within the kind of uh, emerald swirl, swirl there as well as within the pleats of his pants to reflect. Some of the iconography and history of the Livermore Valley, um, with the theme of uh, washing away the dust of everyday lives and painting life into this wall and reflecting some of the activity that happens behind it within the Bankhead Theater.
So, uh, Councilman, Vice Mayor Warner?
I, I think what you just uh, spoke to is the iconography and, you know, we just saw the little discussion on the flower. So my only request is that each of this, of the items in it be um, be carefully looked at to make sure there, that we've got everything um, lined up correctly. I mean, we have a little history of making certain things um, not match up. I mean, we've got, I think, as uh. Elsa Member Monroe pointed out, you know, we got that issue with the totem pole. Every time we get into these kinds of things, we, we really. Take a high risk and we don't always, it doesn't always work. So I would just request very careful um, double checking of all the symbols that we have here.
Yes, absolutely. Um, I guess staff to the Commission for the Arts will be working with Trent um, on some of those will uh, work to incorporate. Your feedback and make sure that those uh, finally selected icons are culturally appropriate, are historically accurate. And reflect the history of, of the valley here.
Councilmember Carling?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, let me get uh, so uh, moved by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Just a couple of things, we were talking about the iconography, things that are important. Uh, I don't want to micromanage this thing because God knows I'm not an artist. Uh, but some of the things that are very important is something that are, this reflected right across the street. Yeah, we do have Stockman Park, so I think the elements of having the Stockman, you know, the cowboy uh, is very important. Um, the uh, the grapes, obviously, um. The history of Livermore really is the history of, Livermore was a town of four thousand people until uh, Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory and Sandia moved in here. So when you look at these, the, the symbol of Livermore, you look at the uh, the city seal. Uh, you've got the cowboy, you've got the grapes, uh, and you've got uh, references to Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory, Sandia. Uh, and of course, my personal favorite Livermorean. So, uh, and of course, the uh, the, the veterans right across the street of the uh, park dedicated to the veterans. So those are just a couple of ideas to, you know, maybe if you include some of those in the uh, as a few extra Easter eggs. Uh, that would, you know, certainly be in keeping with uh, those things that made Livermore special.
Yeah, I, I like that, and I think that's definitely in, in line with what, what uh, the, the plan for the wall is, so appreciate the feedback.
Well, thank you so much, Trent. And, and by the way, your artwork is in my office, City Hall, so uh, I just, I just walked past it when I got here, so thank you very much for that.
Appreciate that.
Um, okay, so I have a motion and I have a second, uh, motion is being like, yes.
I'm sorry, we have some public comment for this item?
Oh, okay, very good. Uh, uh, public comment, yes, I'm sorry.
City Clerk's office, please read the public comments received over Zoom.
The first one is from Erica Engel, and it says, as someone who works at the Bankhead, I think having a mural on that wall is a wonderful idea. It's so important to keep supporting local artists in the community, especially during this time of need. Keep making Livermore beautiful. And we have an anonymous attendee that says, I like the grapes hidden in the pants. And then another anonymous attendee that says, if this is permanent, this is not good. If it takes this much explanation, it's not right. And that concludes the Zoom comments.
Okay. Very good. Any uh, any additional comments? Uh, yes, so I'll close the public hearing. There we go. Uh, public hearing is closed. Uh, we do have a motion uh, by Councilmember Carling, a second by Councilmember Coomer. Uh, is there any additional uh, comment on the item? Okay, with that, uh, I'll ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
All right.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Very good. Well, thank you very much. Uh, the downtown is just, I'm so excited about how uh, everything is coming together. It looks absolutely. Uh, it's very bright, it's beautiful. So thank you all very much for that. Um, so with that, uh, we're on to uh. Matters initiated in council reports. Uh, let's go with uh, Councilmember Coomer.
Um, I won't have, I, after my last set of reports, a couple of weeks ago, I've got nothing till tomorrow's Laugh to Finance and Administration meeting. I've had nothing to report on there and. No matters to initiate.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Monroe?
Hi, um, so I, I just wanted, I just wanted to actually comment on uh, that last comment on the last event before I, I get started, which is. That uh, again, I recognize that and delighted that we have a number of people who maybe have, are attending their first council meeting, so. Just wanted to note that that was an example of how stuff gets done in real time, um, both, both that and actually the, the previous uh. And then, and, and it's, it can get, look pretty messy, um, and it's not final, which is why it's going back and, you know. Um, but I really want, and, and so now this is really part of the, they, please stay engaged. Um, I always recommend Key to the City, but there's also um, depending on age, there's the uh, Youth Committee Commission, uh, LAAC. There's a, a variety of advisory commissions. Um, civic engagement at the local level really matters, particularly as we go forward with some of these issues. Um, having everyone's input matters. Um, so with that, um, I wanted to say something about, uh, I attended the Black Lives Matter Juneteenth. Assembly on June nineteenth, and one of the things that struck me um. At that point was the number of issues and personal stories that were, that the speakers told about growing up in a Livermore that was uh, let's just say less than welcoming. And so this isn't about the engagement with the place, it's about engagement with their fellow students, uh, their fellow workers, uh, people on the street. Um, so um, as we think about who we as Livermore are, um. Engaging with each other just continues to be that much more important. Um, backing up a little bit, Tuesday, uh, June sixteenth. Um, I attended the Innovation Tri Valley Leadership Webinar and looking at where the Tri Valley is going in the next, you know, in this new environment. Um, several speakers, including our own Brandon Cardwell of Daybreak Labs. Um. I have to say, there seems to be a theme for the number of meetings I attended this past week, uh, and it was more or less like. We have a problem here. Um, we're going to have financial problems and we're going to have to be looking very carefully at what happens going forward. And here are some scenarios, and actually, we really don't know how it's all going to come out. So I think that's maybe a good idea for all of us uh, going forward. Um, that was true for the meeting, the E, E, East, EBCE, um, uh, uh, a meeting that I attended on the nineteenth. It was also true at the Intergovernmental Meeting with um, the city and the school, uh, uh, LARP D, uh, the parks and then, and the um. Um, and the college. Um, and with referring back to COVID. I want to remind, again, remind everybody that um, as we've been opening up. We have seen our numbers grow, not quite double in a week, but too close for comfort. Um, there's been a lot of speculation about why, but I can tell you that as I've been out and about, the number of people I'm seeing with no masks on. Um, you know, just taking walks, um, like not around your neck to be pulled up when you pass someone, but just not in evidence. Is a little too high for my comfort, so we can open up, but everybody has to really cooperate as we do it. Um, and finally, one of the most encouraging things that I, I've done this past couple of weeks is. Um, I was treated to a PowerPoint by the Tri Valley Air Quality Community Alliance. Uh, now this was put in. Now, this was put in place by. Mandated by Assembly Bill 617, and it basically gives. Funds from the air board to enable local governments to deal with. Air quality issues and Livermore. The sad thing is Livermore and the surrounding areas Pleasanton, Dublin and San Ramon. Qualified. We're in a valley and we have traffic going through. And so the good news is that we have money and the bad news is actually our air is bad enough that we qualify. It was illuminated. It's wonderful to see them making progress on this. They need some help in building coalitions going forward. Again, some of the people sitting on this. Attending this meeting might be interested in this. I would like to ask that we invite them to present at a council meeting. Yeah, next council meeting or shortly, they really would like to let the community know what they're doing. So. I don't know if that's a matters initiated or just a request, but that would be the last thing I have on my.
Okay, that that sounds good. So we get to have a comment on that. I got anybody else? We can we can put down on the agenda. That'll be coming back.
Okay, thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, customer Carling.
Thank you. So on June 11th, I had a stop waste meeting. I'm. Representative on the recycling board, and that certainly has become to my attention that. A lot of the progress that we've been making as a county and a state in terms of. Reducing. Material going to landfill is. Unfortunately, is suddenly reversed because of the pandemic, which is the reason I brought it up earlier about. Whether or not there were other. Means of. Providing to go to go containers that weren't. Going to end up in the landfill. That was the point in that. Also wanted to, I think we had to. Councilmember Monroe's point, I think we had great. Participation tonight and really some meaningful. Dialogue from the community, particularly around 6.01. Now, you always appreciate the comments that we've received from. The residents and I appreciate again all those comments and appreciate their participation and. Please keep it up. That's it. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hey, yeah, a couple of things. Altamont Open Space Committee Meeting, Intergovernmental Meeting. Wheels Project and Services Meeting. And the other thing I got to do was kind of fun was give a write a give a proclamation. At the Hindu Swam Sevak Sang. HHS is easier to pronounce it that way on the international, celebrating the International Day of Yoga. So I got to see some. Yoga demonstrations as well as thoughts on how to calm the mind and body, which is certainly useful in today's world. So we did that. The the other thing, along with Councilmember Monroe. Worked with. L D I and Livermore Pride to put out a joint statement. Showing how we were working together now on to deal with the incident at the farmer's market. I think that was a very useful interaction and. Much appreciated. So I hope everybody's had a chance to read that statement. And it's kind of an example of what we might think about as we go forward on this other subcommittee. That of all the interested parties, and we haven't identified all the stakeholders here yet. But one of the outputs that we should, I think, aim for is a joint. Statement from all the stakeholders is how we go forward in addressing the. Any issues with respect to the Police Department and possibly the longer term, broader scope item. So. Just want to say is I, I think it's a way to get everybody working together on a common goal rather than in opposition. So there's that. And then the other thing that I did was I've been working with. Restaurant groups and the. People that have the the fitness studios to help them utilize the outdoor space. And I would like to. Suggest. That we did open up downtown last weekend. It would be interesting and I'm going to ask in a moment if the city manager could comment. But with respect to matters initiated, I would like to have, if possible, a. For the next few council meetings, a standard, a standing agenda item. So that we can actually review how things are going as we open up downtown. And and other restaurants and other businesses and have a chance to hear from the community. Because we did get some comments submitted in writing to us. But if we could put that as an agenda item. That we have an opportunity to review and we we don't need staff to put together a. Extended report. It could just be an oral report, but it would give us as a council the opportunity to. Comment and possibly take some actions. So I would like to make that request if I can. See some other heads nod that that makes sense. And then I.
I don't understand what you said, how we're doing. What does that mean?
Well, we we opened up this past weekend. And. What happened on Friday? What happened on Saturday? Is there a need? For adjustments? Remember, we said we would open up and then we would adjust. And the city manager has the authority under the. You know, is granted under the emergency and possibly and even in normal times to make changes. But I do believe that the. Business community does want changes and that we do need to. Look at it on a periodic basis. So for, as an example, the question I'll ask the city manager. Do we intend or do we have the ability to close some of the sections of the streets next weekend, similar to what Pleasanton did? The requests I've heard. Are that the some of the restaurants. Don't need more table space, but they do need more space for the. Citizens to. Be down there and be socially distant as they travel down the the street as an example. So. I think that it would be worth us, and rather than me have to do this somewhat awkwardly, do a matters initiated and then ask the city manager. To say a few words, I would just like to hear. A a report out of how things are going and what adjustments we're making.
So so do I have other a couple of other heads to nod to say that? Sounds a good idea now to get kind of an update on how things are working. Do we need to? Fine tune the the process. So you got my support.
So with that, I would. Like city manager to say quickly what the. How it went last weekend and what we've learned and what we might change.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Warner. This is Mark Roberts, your city manager. You are correct. Last Friday was the first day under the county health order. That full outside dining was permitted throughout Alameda County. And it was popular in downtown Livermore. So if you were down there or heard reports. The great news is that. A lot of folks were down in your downtown on Friday. The good news is people were generally very well behaved as far as a Friday night. But if there was a shortcoming of that, it was sort of the number of people and the spaces that they were actually allocated to be in. So people were. Closer than we would have preferred them to be. And so I think that is one of the things that that your staff noticed on that. On Saturday, we continued to monitor that. We had been working with some of the individual restaurants and others, both handing out information. Looking at some of the minor issues that had that had arisen on Friday. And I think generally the situation was a little better. Again, if there was sort of one shortcoming. It was sort of the number of people in the area versus the space that we had for pedestrians in that area. You asked a very specific question about whether we can close the street. As you remember, in your original authorization to me. You gave that authority and in fact, direction to consider essentially after the fact that we had opened up and given additional area. For restaurants in particular, along First Street, you asked us to consider. Experimenting with and learning from street closures. So. Your staff, if that is council direction, we do have the ability to move forward with a street closure as early as this weekend. One of the things that we. Are concerned about is making sure that that A, it has the intended impact, that it actually helps people and gives them additional areas. So we would be. Talking about a street closure where the closed street would essentially become a pedestrian circulation area. We wouldn't move any tables, chairs or other objects into the street area on that. We're looking at a number of alternatives based on sort of the amount of staff time. That would be necessary, the impact on such mundane things like garbage service and other other sorts of things, deliveries. But I think we're likely to do a first time experiment with a closure. Friday afternoon and then opening up extremely early on Monday morning. So essentially having a weekend closure for this first one. We then want to get a lot of feedback from folks who were both down there and all the businesses who were impacted and then make appropriate adjustments. It may be. Appropriate that that only happens every once in a while. And or that the duration of the street closure. Gets changed so that there's a balance between all of the various restaurants and retailers down there. But our current thinking is at council direction, we certainly have the ability to do that. We'll be doing this essentially with temporary materials to begin with. We have additional materials that are more permanent. That will be here in several weeks, a little later in the summer, but we do have the ability to safely close the street if that's what the council would like.
Oh, thank you. And one other, two other questions. One is. Any issues with respect to the open container? Laws, A B C and ours. And then the other one is. Observations do we have on? The need to encourage people to more people to wear masks. And I think the governor's orders that we're all supposed to and. How did we do relative to that? And are we going to, do we need to make any moves to encourage more compliance?
So to answer your second question first, we had a number of people wearing masks in the downtown, but we also had a number of people who were not compliant. With the governor's order as we as we moved forward. So your staff is doing several things. One is continuing to print information that'll be displayed prominently in our kiosks and adjacent businesses. That remind people that it is required that masks are required outdoors at virtually all times. But in this particular case, in our downtown, where we are bringing hundreds and hundreds of people in very close corridors at times. It's extraordinarily important. So I would say that we have some real room that we could do improvement there to make sure that we keep everybody safe. The servers who are down there, other residents who are are out in the downtown area, and then, of course, those who are dining. So I think our our regulations with the dining and the table service that worked pretty well. One of the items that we're still working with our downtown restaurants on. Is essentially the fact that the ABC requires that alcoholic beverages do one of two things. One is actually be served and consumed. At a table inside a flex zone area that is authorized by ABC. The second is to go drinks can essentially be removed from the district and brought home. You can't mix and match. That is, you can't, for example. Find out that it's 10 minutes until your table is available and go get it to go drink and essentially consume that in a public area. That violates both state rules and our local open container rules. And so we're our first line of defense on that one. Is to remind restaurateurs and others who are serving to make sure that they are very clear with people. That it is actually a violation of both state and local law to have an open container. And the second item is. Reminding if that ultimately doesn't work, reminding people gently of that fact, because that that is an area where we don't want to have a ABC violation that would cause our local restaurateurs to lose the ability. To serve alcohol. That's extraordinarily important for their business. And the ABC does not take a very kind view. Of people violating their rules on a large scale. So we're going to work very cooperatively with our downtown restaurateurs to make sure that. Everybody understands the rules and that we continue to comply with those so that we can continue to make sure that we have our downtown opening.
Well, thank you for that. And one last thing is at the intergovernmental meeting. We are talking about the need to maybe inform people so they will pay attention to the rules more, especially with the mask. And we talked about being able to put together a chart showing the the number of cases that we have over time. And you agreed to do that, but do you have a timeframe for when we might have that up on the site if it's not there already?
We should. So the information is there on the site. I did actually go looking through our site and you can click essentially immediately. On a link in our website to get you directly to the county website that does a comparison of the various cities. But I think one thing that would be a nice addition that we are that we do have locally that we can make more available is sort of that graph over time. And I think as Councilmember Monroe noted, the graph over the last 10 days has sort of been pretty dramatically different than it had been in the three months before that. So I think we are working on that. And I think that's possible certainly to do before the end of the week is to have something on our website where you could. In in our COVID-19 area, click on not only our current cases, but also get something that shows you sort of the the growth of that over time. That is a little tricky because that means we have to sort of constantly be updating that information. But I think with that particular piece of data, we could accomplish that.
Well, thank you. And the other thing, just I'll say this. That, you know, last week, as part of these meetings that I was in, I was actually in the same vicinity of someone who has a confirmed. Turn, you know, confirmed positive. So we all need to be very. Cognitive of this is out there and the mask wearing is the. Most important thing I I've heard that we can possibly do. Fortunately, this was eight days ago now. I don't have any. Symptoms, but nevertheless, it's quite scary and just want to pass that on.
Wow. Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you. To Councilmember Monroe's point about the the air quality. You remember that there are 90,000 cars that come over the Altamont every single day. And that's one of the reasons that Valley Link is going to be so important to. Bring that in here. Alameda County Transportation Commission just voted to go to a public comment period. On whether or not Alameda County Transportation Commission should allocate the $400 million that was originally. Set aside for Bart to Livermore, if that should be given to Valley Link to move that project ahead. So if you're asked to comment, by all means, comment that that's going to absolutely improve our air quality to get 30,000 cars off the road and to. Get value link built. So that's that's important. A customer Monroe also mentioned the great program Key to the City. For those that are interested in the operations of the Police Department, I would also recommend our Citizens Police Academy. Very popular program. It runs twice a year, at least it was twice a year before COVID-19. But we have well over 100 volunteers that volunteer for the city because they're so motivated. By the Citizens Police Academy that they want to continue to help out in the community. So. Another great opportunity to learn more about the Police Department, learn more about the policies and to actually get involved and to be able to provide input is. And becoming really an ambassador. So good opportunity there as well. Customer also mentioned the some of the. Remember the stories that we are hearing, we want to hear those. And she related that some of those related to. How students were treated by other students or by coworkers. So it's an important thing to remember that. You can legislate what to some extent what people do. You can't legislate what people think. And this is going to be a very difficult. Effort as we begin to start the process of changing the way people think. And that's why it's so important to hear from everybody in the community. To listen to everyone and to make sure that these these stories are heard and that we can go back to the community, get that feedback. And continue to move Livermore to be an even more remarkable community. So. With that. Being no further business for the council, our next meeting is July 13th. So at that, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night.